Thank you. Welcome. My name is Margaret Kofey. I'm the coordinator of the Lexington Union of Women Voters, and I welcome you all to this, our fourth first Friday of the year. And I'm grateful to the library for accommodating us today and for everyone who has helped us put this program together. Today, we are going to talk about housing for MBTA communities. Before we get started, a couple of business things. Lex Media is recording this, and it will be available. I don't know if it's live today. It's live, but it will be available on demand. And there are assistive listening devices available up here on the front table if anyone needs one. So with us today, my theater guests are two speakers. And we do have members of the planning board here today. So that's exciting. We have Abby McCabe, who is the planning director at Lexington. It's March 2022, and has been a municipal planner for 15 years in several Massachusetts communities. Also with us is Bob Peters, who is chair of the Lexington Planning Board. He's been on the board since 2019. Prior to joining the planning board, he served as a member of the Housing Refunding Board Commissioners for 12 years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob and Abby. And then at the end, there will be time for questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Margaret. And since this is a posted meeting of the planning board, and there is a forum presence, I'm going to call this meeting of the planning board to order. I am anticipating that there will be no votes of the planning board at this meeting, but this is a posted meeting of the board. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Abby McCabe, the planning director.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this morning. And, um, how about now? Can you hear that better?
I've got a very close microphone.
Thank you. Um, I'll just pop up the microphone for a moment. Here we go. Is that better? Okay.
No.
No? Okay. Um, thank you for all, everyone coming out this morning. I'm Abby McCabe. I'm the planning director. I've been, as Margaret mentioned, I've been the planning director in Lexington since last March. And we're here today to talk about a new state law that was enacted in 2020 by the state legislature, which made changes to the State Zoning Act. So the planning board has been working on this. It's often referred to as the MBTA Communities' Requirements, because that's how it applies to Lexington. There are several changes made to the state zoning laws that impact the local level. And those changes were primarily aimed to increase housing production in Massachusetts and across the region. The new law, it's Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3. And just a brief excerpt of it is on the screen. It says, "An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right." So essentially, what this is saying is that all MBTA communities or MBTA-served communities must adopt zoning that allows multifamily housing. And the word "shall" means "must" in terms of legal terms. So this is something that all communities must adopt. As you can see on the screen, there's a map of all the communities that must meet these new requirements. There's 175. So Lexington is not alone in this. The different colors on the screen of the communities, each community has slightly different requirements in terms of how much they have to implement in their zoning or how much zoning, different zoning requirements for each locality. Lexington is considered an MBTA-adjacent community. The primary purpose of the state enacting this zoning change was to increase housing production in MBTA-served communities to address, to start addressing the severe housing crisis. We know that we're in a housing crisis because Massachusetts has consistently been one of the most expensive places to live in the country for the last couple of decades. And it's continuing to, the prices continue to increase, both in rental costs and homeownership costs. In Lexington, in the last year, couple of years, the median home price is at over $1 million. The reason this is applicable to MBTA-served communities is because public transportation is seen as an asset. And the idea of this new law is that more housing around public transportation can also help with traffic congestion. It helps serves a regional need. It helps job production. It's an economic issue for the community. Let's, the region, Massachusetts, in Lexington falls within this, is that we have, you know, we have residents. We have a lot of schools. The population's highly educated. We have employers. But the workforce and people can't, can't find housing. So people are leaving the state. Employers are often going to other, outside the state where their workers can also find housing. So this has now impacted the state on a larger level. So the state made these changes to the State Zoning Act, requiring localities to do something to help facilitate the production of more housing. The key components of this state law is that all communities must adopt at least one zoning district of a reasonable size. Lexington has some flexibility on exactly where that new, the new housing could be located. But according to the state's guidelines, it has to be in accordance with smart growth principles. For example, locating near public transportation, such as the bus routes, bus stops, major transportation, thoroughfares, or, in Lexington's case, the minute man commuter bike ride. The zoning district overall density, the zoning that we allow must allow a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. And the permit process cannot be discretionary. You'll hear terms such as "by right" or "as of right." That means that the permit process for, first, the zoning adoption. But once the zoning is adopted, if a project were to come forward, it cannot be a discretionary approval process. And then this law pertains to multifamily housing. Multifamily housing means a building designed for three or more dwelling units or two or more buildings on a lot with more than one dwelling in the building. And Lexington currently does not comply because we do not, our zoning bylaw does not permit multifamily housing anywhere in town. Going back to this map, you know, Lexington is not alone in this. Many communities do not allow multifamily housing. Or if they do, it's very, under very limited circumstances. It may be a discretionary permit process, which oftentimes, in the past 50, 60, 70 years, projects may go forward, but then ultimately, they're not approved. So that's why the state has essentially said towns can no longer have that discretionary review. So what we're talking about here is zoning. The planning board or the town of Lexington, we're not required to develop housing. We're not constructing housing. We're not in the construction business. But every town, we have zoning that says what uses are allowed where and under what conditions. The zoning includes two aspects. There's the zoning map that says what uses can go where. And then the zoning bylaws, the actual text that kind of, it outlines the parameters for how properties can be developed. For example, on the map, the yellow areas, the dark yellow and the lighter yellow, those are your single-family housing districts. So that's the predominant land use in Lexington and most suburban communities. So the map says where they can go. Those pink areas on the map, those are commercial, just Lexington's commercial districts. So that says where they can go. And then you refer to the zoning bylaw that says what those heights are, what the maximum heights are, what those minimum setbacks are from property lines, how much parking is required, and details that permit process that is required prior to getting any building permits. So this is what the Lexington Planning Board is working on. They have to propose zoning to town meeting that could allow property owners to then submit an application. The state has also come out with more detailed guidelines in addition to the state law. The guidelines say that all towns must have the zoning adopted by the end of next year. It goes, the guidelines go a little further in defining terms in the law. It says, it takes a kind of two-pronged approach to what reasonable size means. It says that for Lexington, we have to zone at least 50 acres total of land. Half of it has to be, or half of whatever we propose has to be contiguous. And then we must also have a total housing capacity. We must zone to create a total housing capacity of 1,231 units. And then there's, you know, it goes into more, a little more detail about the minimum size, and it has to be more than one lot. So for Lexington, just kind of, you know, if you just looked at the minimum requirements according to the law and the guidelines, and just evenly divided it out, we're looking for 82, approximately 82 acres of land to meet that housing capacity that were required by the guidelines in the law. Some, do you know some local examples of what the density looks like? The minimum that we have to allow is 18 units per acre. In town, some of you might be familiar with the Emerson Gardens is right around 14 units per acre. Lexington Place Condos, right around the corner on Lockham Street, is 16 units per acre. The Muzzy School Condos is 18 units per acre. The Avalon at Lexington Hills is 17 units per acre. The Interfaith Apartments on Garfield are 17 units per acre. The Manor House Condos is 25 units per acre. And then I'll turn it over to the chairman, Mr. Peters, to explain where the Lexington Planning Board is in the process as of today.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Can everyone hear me? Great. So at our first pass, we had a workshop in October, which was attended by approximately 80 residents, and went through an exercise where the maps were distributed to groups of approximately eight to 10 people per table. And what was really interesting, you can see on the slide of the, this is the composite of the different groups. And really, the predominant areas where people thought that this type of zoning should apply in town, there was a lot of commonality among the groups. And by and large, they followed the bus lines through town. So if you perceive east, east to west, East Lexington had a good number of groups that selected them through up Mass Avenue and down Bedford Street towards the west side of town and Pottwell Avenue and Bedford Street. We thought the meeting was, it was a cold and rainy night where we had 80 folks show up for this discussion. And we thought that was really a great turnout for that exercise. But it was also really helpful for the board and for staff in designing what we wanted to bring, bring, bring forth from that. And those who've been following the process, we've had this on our agenda for public work sessions for every planning board meeting since the beginning of November. And we've had discussions, significant discussions over that time. And for folks who were on our most recent meeting on January 4th, there were over 50 people on the Zoom. So that doesn't take into account who may have been following the meeting on Lex Media, are kicking it up afterwards on Lex Media. And the meeting lasted five hours. And by and large, towards the end of the meeting, there was still well over 30 people who were joining us on that meeting. So there's been a lot of interest, I think rightly so. And we've seen a good number of folks in the community participate in the process. And those who've been at multiple meetings, I think it's seen that the, the thinking of the board and staff has evolved over time. So it's been a very positive exercise. And I think we're moving towards something that is going to be, probably won't reach a consensus in the community, but will have a, hopefully, a broad swath of support throughout the community as we prepare to bring this to the spring annual town meeting. So folks who were on the meeting and listened on January 4th, we began that meeting with over 200 acres potentially under consideration. And we started in East Lexington and are working through the proposed zones from east to west. And we got as far as Lexington Center. But the 200-plus acres that we were proposing initially, we have reduced somewhat and are now with a proposal that is in the, in the realm of 140 acres. Ms. McCabe indicated the minimum required area that we need, which is approximately 80-some acres. The expectation is that we're going to want to bring something to town meeting that is somewhat in excess of that number so that both to accomplish some of the goals that the town has identified outside of MBTA community-specific compliance, but because also there's a, a broad consensus, as was represented in our work on the comprehensive plan, that housing is a need in town and that this is one tool that we have to encourage development of housing. So these are the, these are the, currently the zones that are in contention. We're continuing the discussion on next Thursday, January 12th. We have a, a special working session of the planning board, which is devoted to MBTA communities housing. And we have our regular meeting on January 18th, which also has a fairly lengthy development agenda aside from MBTA communities. So we're hoping to get significant work done at the special meeting on Thursday, January 12th. And as I said, considering the zones that are in consideration west of Lexington Center, we need to work the roads at the meeting on January 12th. And I guess notably, the town center, we had some significant feedback about the town center and how to, how to deal with that. I think a, a good number of board members agreed with the position that the Lexington Center Committee was taking, which was that there is a risk in following the MBTA communities guidelines for housing in the center, that the potential of, over time, reducing to something approaching zero of commercial space on the ground floor in Lexington was a risk that I don't think that we were prepared to take. So in our, in our, the way we are working with this at the moment is that we are hoping to bring a proposal included in MBTA communities separate from meeting the requirements of the state requirements for MBTA communities, so that we would require mixed use in Lexington Center. So I mean, that was a notable change that we made at the January 4th meeting and is currently under consideration. Ms. Mass? So after the meeting on January 4th, those are the areas that we have taken out of consideration bar MBTA compliance. So the current proposal is an overlay district, so that the underlying zoning, whether it is commercial or residential, will remain. An overlay, and Ms. McCabe can correct me if I'm wrong, but the overlay gives a developer the option of building under the, what's allowed under the overlay, or if they choose, they can build to what the underlying zoning will allow. So that it allows some flexibility for a landowner or a developer, but that it also provides compliance with the state requirements and, and gives some flexibility in that regard. Another notable thing that we discussed at the January 4th meeting was whether or not to allow the overlay district to effectively preempt the underlying zoning as it, as it regard to any properties that were zoned residential. And it appeared that the consensus of the board, or at least the wide swath of the board, felt that the restrictions of the underlying zoning should prevail. And so that if, if the underlying zoning is residential, then a developer could not use the more permissive zoning of the overlay district to develop commercial uses in what the, where the underlying zoning was residential. And so these are some of the basic requirements of the, of the proposal. And 40B for projects that are residential. With the commercial incentive, greater height is allowed. And that is our incentive to, a developer, to build mixed use, since under the MBTA communities guidelines, we cannot require a mixed use. And we also, meeting Lexington's goals and, and desires, we, we are adopting the inclusionary requirement as allowed under the state requirements. And for a number of reasons. Lexington currently is in the safe harbor from 40B developments. And if we don't continue to produce affordable housing that's listed on the, on the subsidized housing inventory, we lose ground over time. So that the intent is to maintain status quo, at least for development that is, is developed under this, under this provision. We also, as we know from our discussions on comprehensive plan, in addition to what the state considers strictly affordable housing, there's also the need for so-called workforce housing or housing that is below the market rate in Lexington but accommodates, for instance, a school teacher at five to 10 years in their careers, would have the possibility of affording to live in Lexington, which is also can identify as if you need and the desire of a, of a town. And so for the process, the board will develop a zoning proposal. We will, as I said, we have two meetings in January where there'll be discussion on this. And we've scheduled a public hearing on this for the, for the bylaw amendments in preparation for the spring annual town meeting, which will be on Wednesday, February 1st, 6:00 p.m. on Zoom. And since this is, is housing and under the recently adopted Housing Choice statute, it would require a majority vote at town meeting to pass. The town meeting is anticipated to begin on March 20th, and we will be in session, town meeting, until the warrant is completed. And if this, if the zoning is adopted, this will allow property owners to submit applications for multifamily housing and to provide more redevelopment opportunities. And then the, the link to the information on the planning board site and to get on the meeting notification list is on the website, on the planning board's website. So with that, why don't we, I think, one more slide, I guess. And this is just to show the, the items that are, were identified as important in the Lexington Act, the comprehensive plan, which we adopted this year. Adoption of the intent of MBTA communities is in line with what we've identified in the comprehensive plan as community needs, wants, and desires. So with that, I think you'll, I'll fill the questions. I may take some of them, and they're all of the board who's present and planning director.
Is on? Okay. Before we move on, I just want to introduce the three people who are sitting at the table up here. For those of you who don't know them, these are three members of the elected planning board, Charles Hornick, Ellie Thompson, Bob Creach. And I'm glad they joined us today, along with Bob, who's the chair. So with that, questions?
My name is Ed Dolan. I live in Patagonia. I did not at all understand the.
Mike, what is not on?
My name is Ed Dolan. I live in Patagonia. I did not at all understand the scripture or the scriptures of the overlay zoning that's on the law.
All right. The importance of the overlay district is that we're not changing the zoning on anyone's property. So if your property is owned, or if you're in the overlay, if you're one of the properties that are in the overlay district, they're not becoming non-conforming. They continue to exist as they do today. So for example, if it's, you know, business property, such as the town center, well, an example, I guess, would be the area on Bedfordworth and Road. The planning board right now has that under consideration for the new overlay district. That's in a commercial business area. That will remain. So the current zoning is, will still be in place. But if adopted, this gives another option for the, a property owner to develop under this new proposed overlay district. So nothing, nothing will, nothing's automatically going to change. But the zoning, if a property owner or future property owner chooses to, they can submit an application under the proposed zoning overlay district. Right now, they're calling it the Village, Village Overlay District. That's not, that's what the new overlay district is called. So the importance there is that we're not, the planning board's not changing anyone's current zoning. It's just allowing another development option if a property owner so chooses to.
I'd like to make a comment on the.
Could you put the hand if I need help?
Tom Cycle. Respect the idea of keeping residential property, allowing residential use to be over there. I understand the concern there for neighborhoods that are residential now. The problem is that it bakes in the current development pattern. It hasn't gotten possible, and it doesn't allow things to evolve. And if you want to create neighborhoods that are walkable and have services that people can use, then we need to allow some commercial mobility. So my idea is to use a finer-grained approach where I don't need to go rather than a one-size-fits-all where we're redirecting all these many commercial uses we're not allowing any, is to have the concept of like, of like, commercial use. Where, so it'd be a couple of things. First, rather than allowing the two-floor ones, 25-foot ones, you just have a 15-foot ones, essentially allowing more additional floor. Then you would require any commercial to be only on the first floor. Then you could limit the commercial uses to things that are considered to be much more neighborhood-friendly. So there wouldn't be as much incentive to develop commercial. And maybe initially, given the current market conditions, we won't see any commercial develop. But if the market conditions change over time, with those conditions now, it would be that, maybe, commercial, like, commercial. So I think it addresses a lot of things that tend to be heard on Wednesday night, with the height in presidential areas of the. with the height in residential areas of the 65-foot ones, you just bring it down to 55 feet. And also the worry of having intensive commercial use in residential areas. So I think it takes a lot of boxes and concerns to be heard, but yet doesn't bake in our current development pattern. It doesn't allow, kind of, that we just want to see it create more walkable areas.
Thank you. You can tell that Mr. Sykel has been following along at all the planning board meetings. He knows a little more detail than what we went over tonight, or this morning. Sorry, morning. The planning board on Wednesday night, their current draft, they have set, the draft that they reviewed on Wednesday night, in most of the areas said a maximum of 40 feet for a fully residential building is allowed. But then they talked about allowing a density bonus of 20, up to 25 feet if the project contained, also contained a non-residential use. So the planning board heard a lot of concern from some nearby residents of certain areas about the bonus height going up to the 65 feet. So I think the planning board members will take that under consideration. They're thinking about it. So that's why, you know, their meeting on Wednesday night was five hours long, and they decided at 11:00 PM that they needed another chance on Thursday the 12th to discuss this further. So we haven't yet had a chance to update the draft zoning language in the math after this week's meeting, but it's something that the planning board is continuing to look at. They detailed on the specifics of the locations and the heights and trying to figure out what height and what bonus would be appropriate.
My name is Jermina Gorance in Chongchow, and I live at 25 Borough Road. Oh, is it that? My name is Jermina Gorance in Chongchow, and I live at 25 Borough Road. Like many residents in Lexington, I have a deep interest in affordable housing. And I know the things that, and I understand that the zoning law, the MDTA law, does not require, but permits inclusion of affordable housing, and that it is concerned that the, anything that is included, any plans that are included are not so deep or broad such as they discourage private development. However, the guidelines from October 21, 2022, from the Department of Housing and Community Development do state that municipality is allowed to go broader than 10% of dwellings in any private project to require that more than 10% of units be affordable in projects if they have an economic feasibility study that shows it will be, in a sense, poison pill to the developer. So my concern is that, is wanting to understand whether or not the board is committed to doing the feasibility study so that we could go broader than 10% and determine how deep it could go in terms of how you have to vary median income and have that all done in a credible way so that to be able to present that as part of the bylaw that's coming.
Yes, that's exactly right. The state's guidelines that came out in October said the maximum that towns could require in a project is 10% of a project to be income restricted units, unless we can go higher, but no more than 20% of a project if we have a feasibility study submitted to the state for their review and approval. And the planning board certainly wants to do that, but right now, we haven't secured that study yet. Planning board, a separate article on the warrant, they did put a placeholder, hoping that we could get that study done in time, but at the rate we're going, we haven't yet because it has to be a third-party study done by an agency totally independent of the town, approved by the state. So it's unlikely that we'll have that by town meeting. However, right now, the planning board is committed to doing that. We'd like to do that. We have a second article, placeholder. So right now, our first, the town meeting warrant has several articles on it. So we have one that we think, right now, the proposal includes the maximum that we can do without the study is 10%. And then we have a placeholder on, hoping in the event we can go up higher and in the event we can get a study done in time, we would submit it. However, it's unlikely, we may not have that done in time for the next two or three months. But we're trying. We just haven't been able to do that yet. If we're not for this town meeting, the planning board, I would expect, might want to bring something at a future town meeting to increase that amount. Because the planning board feels it's important to have some workforce housing as well, the moderate income housing.
Talking to the microphone, and I didn't like yourself.
Can you hear me well? Yeah?
That's. I mean, your name? We need your name.
Oh, Ruth Thomas. I'm a little bit concerned about parking because as I understand it, the law doesn't compel a developer to provide parking. But it seems to me that a lot of these areas are in residential or near residential areas with 90% of the units market rate. It doesn't seem realistic that people are not going to own cars. And I'm just wondering if locally we can change that or modify that.
So I think that's a good point, but the requirement is for a minimum. So the market will actually drive some of that. If the developer chooses to build more parking, there's nothing that would prohibit that. So if you are trying to market units and feel as, to that, to that point, that you need more parking, I think a developer would develop more parking as part of their development. Mr. Hornig?
Just to clarify.
Would you like a microphone?
Just, just to clarify, the current draft proposal, which is subject to change, would require for, any commercial uses requires the same parking they require now. For the multifamily residential use, it requires half what is required now because of the theory that these are all located near transit and we can require less parking. But it is not that there is no parking required. We're currently requiring half the parking space per dwelling unit. In the current draft, it used developments as compared to one space per dwelling unit elsewhere.
Hello? Tony Galaitis?
Yes.
Tony Galaitis? And one thing I want to point out first, if you hold it like this, it's not doing very much. You need to hold it almost, or shove it in your mouth. Okay? Then maybe it can be heard. I just want to follow up a point made by Jermina earlier about the 10%. I feel this article provides a golden opportunity to keep ahead with a 10% minimum we're required to have. I don't see any of the tear-down locks going affordable on a voluntary basis. So what will be happening constantly will see an erosion with what we have currently as a percentage. And we need to hit the minimum due to this opportunity, keep up with that. So personally, I would like to start with a 15%, something like that, not a fourth bullet. And then you can go from there. Instead of saying, let's do it this way, and maybe we'll fix it later. This is a planning pool. If you have that, you can negotiate something else. But I think we should start with a way, but true planning, nice planning that the planning board can do, will somehow minimize the future opportunity for 40B ratings. In a way, so far, they've been provided affordable housing, but they will not at present be this. Thank you.
Thank you for the point. And I think that the board does feel that we want to, at minimum, maintain equilibrium with regard to 40B. The guidelines from the state allow us to have the 10% inclusionary housing. As was discussed before, we have a placeholder article, but we need to meet the state requirements of getting a third-party consultant to do the economic report. And whether that can happen in time for the spring annual town meeting or not is what is in question. But I think, as Ms. McCabe indicated, the likelihood is that the intention of the board is to move forward with that at the first available opportunity, whether that would be spring 2023 or a subsequent town meeting.
Mary Hamilton, in Jersey? I have, I have two questions. One is very straightforward. If this does not pass town meeting in March or April, and I hope it does, but if it doesn't, can it come back in the fall? Or is there a, you know, one-year wait or something like that?
So the intent of the planning board is since that we are dealing with a state requirement that the town must comply with or be subject to certain loss of funding opportunities, we would bring this back to a subsequent town meeting. And for a planning board-sponsored article, the board is free to bring it back at the next available opportunity. If it were to be unsuccessful, we would be taking some time, I think, to consider what we needed to alter in the plan to make it acceptable. But our intention is to bring this to spring 2023 town meeting and bring something that is acceptable to the town meeting.
Okay, second question. You've talked about this, it's not clear to me on the slide. And I'll have to just add, I've been going to the planning board meetings. It is incredible, the amount of thought and effort that's been put into this, especially by a bunch of volunteers. The issue of height is very important to me. If, if a, if an overlay zoning district has some commercial and some residential underlay, would a plot of land that was zoned residential would stay residential? Is that correct? It could not be affected by the taller height instead of the commercial?
So that is correct with the state of the draft today, based on our meeting on January 4.
Okay.
Do you have the ability to put, you have the ability to put the board the language of the bylaw related to the 8%? Do you repeat the question?
Mr. Pressman asked about putting, displaying on the screen the exact language about the inclusionary requirements in the guidelines that talk about the income limitation that is typical. The guidelines that, I just don't have it on the PowerPoint slide, but the guidelines say that communities can't require no less than 80% of the area median income.
So, so my question about that is, does that mean that a person who's 30% AMI, or 60% AMI, or who's 80% AMI could be selected by self-protection? Or what does it mean? Because if it's 80% AMI, and the developer can stay there, that is not dealing with the person who's mostly needed housing. But I want to understand what that standard means.
So I think that's a really good question. I alluded to that at the Wednesday meeting. And I think it doesn't make a lot of sense excluding someone who is at 30% or 50% of AMI. But the language as it's written would appear to exclude anyone below 80% of AMI because it says no less than 80%. These are, the guidelines, as we've seen over the last year, have been a work in progress. So I would actually think that that question needs to be put back to BHCD to see what their intent was and whether the wording is their intent or is a scripter's error. And Mr. Hornig, did you wish to add anything to that?
Charles Hornig on the planning board. Yeah, just a real brief primer on the affordable housing warrant. So what BHCD told us is that we can't require anything stricter. We can require that a certain amount, the 10% of the housing, be deed restricted to people who make 80% of AMI or 100% of AMI or 120%. But we can't make anyone deed restricted to someone who makes 60%. That's only what we require. The property owner can always deed restrict their property any way they want, but we can require a certain minimal amount of deed restriction. Now, once the property owners deed restricted the property, that does limit who can live in it. If they deed restricted it 80%, let us say, that won 10% of the units, anyone who makes more than 80% would not be allowed to live in it. People who make less than 80% are allowed to live in it. The people who make less than 70% wouldn't be able to afford to live in it because it will have a price or a rent that's set so that it is just barely affordable to someone who makes 70% of AMI or more. So what we're setting here is just at the sort of very edge of this long chain of events that ends up resulting in someone being able to either be allowed to live somewhere or to be able to afford to live somewhere. But nothing we're doing here prevents a property owner from limiting, further limiting the income of, deed restricting it in a steeper way or making it affordable to someone who makes less money in a different way, such as a rent subsidy from our Affordable Housing Trust or something like that. This is just a limit on what we're allowed to require in the zone.
Thank you, Mr. Hornig. I think that provides some clarity. Mr. Creech, would you wish to add anything?
Two things, just as, thanks, Mark. At Emerson Garden Road, which is now Lily Pond Lane. Can't hear me? At Emerson, on Emerson Garden Road, which is now Lily Pond Lane, it's a condominium complex. One unit was set at 150% of AMI and is sold for $550,000, just so you know what the numbers are. And secondly, there's, that's one issue we're dealing with. Another one is, for example, we're not allowed to require mixed use that is commercial on the lower floor, like in East Lexington. They won't, they want, BHCD wants housing, nothing else. So there's no reason, so, you know, we're dealing with that. That's the reason why we pulled. That's the reason why we pulled Lexington Center out, because we're not willing to take that risk. There's no reason why you can't write a letter to DHCD and complain about some of these requirements.
Right. And I just want to add, the state, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, they have these very strict guidelines. We believe, you know, they're well intentioned. The reason they set them is because they were fearsome or worried that communities would have zoning laws that were so strict that it would not be consistent with housing production. So they were afraid that communities would adopt zoning that was too strict, that no one could feasibly ever construct any housing. So, you know, some, you know, we're working with the guidelines that are set by the state. We have to because even if we go through the zoning adoption process, if it's approved at town meeting, we have to submit it to the state for approval, and they could reject it if we don't meet their guidelines. Then we have zoning that's not in compliance, and then we're still stuck with the zoning. So we want to make sure we comply. It's just been a hard balancing act. I agree with the state's intent, and that's the plan we're working at with, but they did make these guidelines really restrictive because they were trying to prevent communities from being too restrictive.
I would, I would just add that this has been a, a process of evolution. The, the initial guidelines from the state have no requirement for inclusionary housing, and the, the thought was that by increasing the pool of housing, affordability would be addressed through market forces. So that it was really pushback from the communities and from advocates that got an affordability component accepted in and included in the guidelines that we see from DHCD. But really, it was originally conceived that market forces would create affordability.
Pat Costello, on Pat Costello, on the other one, Pressman Road, Lexington. One of, the third I'm strict is that if we do not go along with this, then we will not be able to get any funding, or we may not be able to get funding from the state that we currently get. So can you tell us what would be in jeopardy if we did not go along with zoning?
So there are specific funding opportunities identified both in the statute and the guidelines, but they also, DHCD also reserve the right to restrict or withhold other funding opportunities. And just an example, it was in the Globe, oh, probably a month ago at this point, the city of Waltham and three or four or five other communities chose not to miss the deadline for submitting just their action plan. So basically, a piece of paper outlining what they intended to do. And the consequence of that was that not the city of Waltham, but the Waltham Housing Authority lost $300,000. Now, in the budget of the size of the city of Waltham, $300,000 is probably a fairly trivial amount of funds, but for the Waltham Housing Authority, $300,000 could be a very significant amount of funds. So, and, and having been a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Lexington Housing Authority for a significant amount of time, those are funding opportunities which are very impactful to the housing authority and would not necessarily be really noticed in the town budget, but could have a significant consequence to the housing authority.
Another, another question. You brought up the question about parking. Is there any kind of a promise that the MBTA would increase service in Lexington? Because actually, if you're looking at low income and affordability, many of those people, that's not an astronomy, but many people with low income are in the service industry. We do not have, we do not have service from the MBTA that would take care of anybody who has to get back and forth to work after six o'clock to eat. Is there any kind of promise that the MBTA would give services?
So for anyone who commutes with the MBTA, there are no promises. But as we've seen over, over 20 or 30 years, and this is a, a development plan which will unfold over 10, 15, or 20 years, the bus lines do change over time. There was a time when there was a Waltham Street bus that went from Lexington Center to Waltham, which has been eliminated. I think in the current bus reconfiguration plan from the MBTA, the 76 bus has been fairly significantly reconfigured going forward, which we'll see theoretically introduced in 2023. But it's kind of a chicken or an egg. Do you build the housing and the bus lines will come, or do you wait for the MBTA to act? So I think that it is important that those for whom public transit is important to continue to advocate for strong MBTA service in the community. But there is no commitment from, from the MBTA that I've seen.
This is just from a side, but when I was finding my house after the pandemic, one of the incentives for what you think was a train that made me rich. And I moved here in December of 77. The train stopped running in February of 70. And now we have a bicycle path, and I can't ride a bicycle.
Glad you stayed.
Yeah, hold up.
Hi, at Orton?
Yeah.
Okay, Russ Tanner. I, I want to second the comments made earlier about, about to thank you all for your effort and work on producing a, it seems to me, a very, a very visionary and forward thinking proposal. Thank you very much for that. The, within the districts, the ability to implement them depends a lot on the actual lots, the lots available to development, and of course, on the content, on the abilities of developers to get rights and develop that. So I wanted to ask Ms. McCabe and the board members, what actual scale of development, the types of development, the innovation happening in these systems?
Well, there are, the planning board's current proposal, I'll just go back to the The areas that the planning board is considering have varying lot sizes. Maybe properties in East Lexington are fairly small properties. Most of those lots are under 5,000 square feet. But that is enough to produce housing. You know, development could occur on those properties, or lots could be combined. However, you know, most of these properties are currently developed. We really don't have Lexington or across the region. There isn't, you know, vacant swaths of land just waiting to be developed. So most properties already have buildings on them, or most of them are already actively in use. So if lots were to be combined, that could happen, but it, it does take time. Land acquisition can take years. But some areas, if you, if you see this map, there are properties on Bedford Street in the Warden Road area. Those are much larger properties. Also, the ones on Bedford Street in the Hartwell Ave area are the, you know, large properties. Also, in South Lexington and the Waltham Concord Street intersection, there are, are some development opportunities there. The, you know, a larger property, especially if it's held in, or property is held in common ownership, those are more, I mean, many of them are in active use right now. But it's easier to redevelop a property if it's held under, you know, one ownership and large enough to do something with. Some properties in the district, they, some of them are constrained because of wetlands. So local and state wetlands laws still apply. So not every property is fully developable. But we feel that most of the properties, all the properties that Planning Board is looking at, there is potential for redevelopment. It just, you know, the situation we're in, the housing crisis, it, it did take years, decades for us to get where we are. And it, you know, zoning is one tool to get out of it. As we just heard from the previous speaker, I think there also needs to be significant state investment in public transportation improvements. So zoning is only one tool. So it really will take us decades to get out of this situation as well. So, you know, development is slow. I mean, it may feel fast for people, but the permitting process can take years. I've seen people approach us anxious to get started, and in five years, they haven't even submitted a proposal. It can take years before plans are even drawn up. Some things can move faster, but most of the properties the Planning Board are considering are, are currently developed with buildings and have businesses in them currently.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
No.
Hi, I'm, I'm, hi, I'm Chandler King. And the question I wanted to ask is about the center of Lexington, I know you're involved in something about deciding that the center was not the right place for this proposal for some reason, but I didn't really understand why.
Thank you for the question, and I apologize if I wasn't, wasn't clear. The, we included the center in our first pass, and we got some significant feedback from the community, from the Lexington Center Committee. And one of, one of their points, which I think resonated with the board, was that we are offering an incentive to developers to build mixed use, so commercial with residential. The state, this requirement is based on producing housing. And the concern expressed from the Center Committee was that while it's an incentive, the economics of building 100% residential building in Lexington Center, the incentive may not be enough to actually preserve what we already have, which is ground floor, commercial space in Lexington Center. So in looking at that as a trade off, we still want to produce housing, but we have ta, at the moment, at least in our draft, have taken Lexington Center out of consideration for inclusion in the MBTA communities requirement, where we can only have an incentive for production of commercial, of redevelopment of commercial space on the ground floor. And we are including it in rezoning, but with a requirement for the ground floor, a requirement for mixed use. So we cannot require mixed use under MBTA communities. We can only provide an incentive. But we felt, we, basically, it seemed that a consensus with the board was that the concern about losing commercial space in the center was legitimate, and that over time, we could see buildings 100% residential developed in the center, and that the existing commercial space in the center would erode over time and be replaced with 100% residential. So we sought to address that by continuing to push to rezone, but to take it out of consideration for MB, MBTA communities, where we could only create an incentive for commercial mixed use development and make it a requirement. And you still look puzzled, so please follow up.
Yeah, maybe, maybe other people are getting it. What is, what is the impact of putting it, of rezoning it outside of the MBTA requirements? Will it still be, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
So the, the impact is we cannot count the acreage in Lexington Center towards meeting the requirements of the MBTA communities, but we can still rezone and create the requirement needed that it be mixed use.
Right. I'll just add that the Planning Board is going to include in their zoning proposal upper story housing to be allowed in the town center, but because of their requiring ground floor retail, the state, when they see it, if it's adopted, will say, hey, that doesn't, so they'll kind of put a little accent to it on their 1231 unit right here. You know, they'll give us a little line up or something on it. But, so that's why it's important for the Planning Board to try to make up the 1231 units elsewhere.
One more. The Doyle Center with the, with Lexington, would they even top down? I was a little concerned with, if I understood correctly, that you're talking about if with multi housing zoning, that as much, you're not going to require very much parking, with the assumption that somebody lives on a bus line, of course, they're going to take a bus to work. I work in East Boston. There was no way. I could, I live on a bus line. There was no way I could take public transport to work. So do we have any studies that shows how many people actually use our buses for getting into work, whether they're going north or east or west to, to work?
The, the Planning Board proposal currently has parking requirements that are, and it essentially says, the parking requirements are the exact same as what we require today across town. So any non-residential use must propose the same minimum requirements that are required today. And for all housing units in town, we require 0.5 parking spaces for every dwelling unit throughout town today. So the Planning Board's, no, oh, oh, one, is it one?
One town right now, 25 in the 12 family, you know, that's.
Oh, okay. Mr. Hornig is saying we require one parking space per dwelling unit today for one family?
For all.
Oh, for all residential. And the proposal is point five.
The proposal for, as, the proposal under consideration would reduce that, the 0.5 per dwelling unit on the assumption, as a minimum, to permit a developer to decide to produce more transit oriented housing at a lower cost, should they choose to. There is no upper limit on the amount of parking that a developer can require, and that those who wish to build developments that are aimed at people who will need cars can provide one or even two spaces for dwelling unit. But this opens the opportunity for someone to build a development that is targeted at people who will be using most on mass transit, and that will thus provide less parking and be able to produce the housing at a lower cost.
Hello? I think with that, we should adjourn. I want to thank all of you for coming today. We should make very, very good form and lots of good questions. I want to thank the president. And let's make Abby believe in here, and for the Planning Board members who came. Now, Bob has to adjourn the Planning Board meeting, which was a posted meeting because four of them are here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge the work of the staff, the board of volunteers. This is professional work by the staff. Abby McCabe has been planning director since March, and she
And let me say, Abby Lee in here. And for the planning board members who came. Now, Bob has adjourned the planning board meeting, which was a posted meeting because four of them are here today.
Thank you, thank you, Margaret. Before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge the work of the staff. The Board of Volunteers, this is professional work by the staff. Abby McCabe has been planning director since March. And she has had a full complement of staff for less time than that. And really, the work the staff has done has been remarkable. So, thank you.
And I'd like to thank the planning board members because they, they're volunteers and they've been working diligently, meaning almost weekly. Most of their meetings have been going about four or five hours long, if anyone. And I see, and I'd like to thank everyone here because I've seen most of you also logging into our Zoom meetings. So you've all experienced this four- or five-hour Zoom meeting. So thank you for all this input. For people that have been following the line, the planning board's proposal has been evolving, you know, with each meeting. So we had some changes come out of this week's meeting. They'll continue the discussion next week. So we are currently working on continuing to update their voting proposal.
Thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the planning board. Mr. Horne, Ms. Thompson. So it's moved and seconded. This is an in-person meeting, so those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. Standing, so the planning board is adjourned. Thank you.